Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call to order the November 28, 2016, meeting of the Dover City Council. I'd ask you to please rise and join me for an invocation by Chaplain Wallace Dixon, followed by the pledge to our nation's flag, which will be led by Councilman Sutler.
So with our heads, our Father and our God, we thank you for this day. We're asking that you be in this meeting with us. Keep us calm, keep it peace, and we'll give you a name of praise. Amen.
Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you have before you this evening's agenda. I would like to add an item to the agenda, which would be Item 2B, the presentation by Mayor Christians on the initiative to end veterans homelessness. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
The move to accept the agenda as presented with the alterations.
Second.
The move by Councilman Sutler and seconded by Councilman Hutchinson to accept the amended agenda. Are there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We now have before us the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda, which are considered routine and non-controversial, are marked with an asterisk, will be acted upon by a single roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council so requests. In which event, the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered a separate item. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. President, I'm going to request that under Number 6, Committee Meeting of a Whole Report dated November 15, 2016, under C, Legislative Finance and Administration Committee, Number 3, C be pulled for clarification with a question that I have. That is Number 2016-27, Amending Chapter 18, Animal Section 18-4, running at large.
Okay. Are there any other amendments to the consent agenda? You're not entertaining a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Neal, seconded by Councilman Lewis. Are there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please hold your role.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Hossfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Eight to zero. Item Number 2A is a presentation for the recognition of service for James G. McGiffin, Jr., for his role on the Dover Human Relations Commission from March 2014 through October 2016. I would invite Mayor Christensen and the Honorable James G. McGiffin, Jr. to the podium with him. And I would ask the city clerk to please read the petition.
Certificate of appreciation presented to James G. McGiffin, Jr., Dover Human Relations Commission, March 2014 through October 2016. Your public service, selflessness, and talents have increased the quality of life for the residents of this city of Dover.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. President, members of council. Judge McGiffin, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Dover, we'd like to present you with a small token of our appreciation for your endless service as a member of council and a member of the Human Relations Commission. And we appreciate your continued service to our city and our state. Would you like to say a few words?
I wouldn't mind saying a few words. So I started with the reconstituted Human Relations Commission, along with a number of other people, and almost all those people have had to leave for one reason or another. And so I'm very sorry about that. But notwithstanding that, we have done some work. Mostly what I want to say is that I've learned that the city, particularly the professional staff that we had a chance to deal with, to interview, and to talk to, hold diversity as an important value. And I was gratified to learn that. It wasn't at all surprise. I mean, I've lived in the city for 27 years and sat where some of you are sitting now for a while. And so I knew that there was a lot of good stuff going on, but I never had a chance to dig that deep. And so it was gratifying and encouraging to learn that. And it is my hope that the city will continue to explore how we can improve, because we're all human, we can always improve. And I love the city, and I love you all, and I thank you very much.
Council President. To the Honorable Judge James G. McGriffen, Jr. Judge?
Oh, sorry. Where are hopes there?
As the former Chairman of the Dover Human Relations Commission, I want to thank you for all your input, your wisdom, and guidance with the new ordinance underneath the Dover Human Relations Commission's new ordinance. Thank you very much. You've done a great job.
Kind of be the same, so thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Here, here, Judge, because I was on that commission also.
Right, right. Thank you. Thank you.
We now have Item 2B, presentation by Mayor Christensen on the initiative to end veterans homelessness.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity for some personal preference and reflection. On November 11, at the Delaware Memorial Bridge during the Veterans Day celebration, Vice President Biden, Senator Carper, Governor Markell made the announcement that the state of Delaware was the third state to complete their initiative of trying to end veterans' homelessness. The initiative during the course of the last 18 months identified 489 veterans and 415 veterans were successfully housed. The misnomer that veterans homelessness in the state of Delaware or across our country has ended is not really the case. The battle continues on. On Monday, November 14, myself and Bill Farley and Chief Burnett traveled to the White House to be among 150 elected officials from the state of Delaware and across this great country who accepted the mayor's challenge to end veterans homelessness. We did that here in Dover by putting together a conglomeration of our citizens who worked tirelessly over the last 18 months to successfully house 89 veterans. But let me make it very clear, the battle continues on. And I was very honored to be at that conference on ending veterans homelessness sponsored by First Lady Michelle Obama and the Second Lady Dr. Jill Biden, who began the initiative. The citizens of Dover rose to the occasion, as they have risen to the occasion, to help those who are less fortunate than us. Having said that, the battle continues on to end veterans homelessness. But along those lines, I would like to take the liberty of announcing to you this evening that I have appointed, or will be appointing over the next few days, a number of our citizens to address the issue of chronic homelessness amongst our civilian population, including a member of council who has agreed to serve. The goal of this Blue Ribbon Commission will be to determine who the homeless are. Just as in the mayor's challenge to end veterans homelessness, we identified the veterans by name. We will identify the homeless by name, where they are from, and how did they become homeless, and their situation. Secondly, what we have done as a community, what we've done right as a community to address the issue of chronic homelessness, not as a government entity, but as a community of established shelters, churches, and fraternal organizations and individuals. Additionally, the commission will be asked to determine how, as a community, we can do better, including combined efforts to end the issue of chronic homelessness, such as implementing the template established by the mayor's challenge to end chronic homelessness amongst veterans and veterans' families. A plan which puts in place rapid, permanent housing, not temporary housing, and contact with those who are homeless with the appropriate agencies, both state and federal, to provide services, which are not a part of the city's mission. Finally, I will ask this commission to make recommendations to state and federal authorities on how our model that we use to end veterans homelessness here in the city or address those issues be used to address this important issue. I thank you for your time, and I will solicit your input over the next two months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We now have before us Item Number 3, Council Committee of the Whole Legislative Finance Administration Report from October 11, 2016. Item A, the request of Fordham and Dominion Brewing. That request is Councilman Hare, the Chair of Legislative Finance and Administration.
This item was deferred until we got some more information. And we, the mayor has departed. The mayor and myself both have spoken with the base and the base commander, and they said, what they have told me, and the mayor will be able to address it here in a moment, is that what we've been doing in the past has worked. And whatever we've done the last six months, the last few years, has seemed to work. They haven't had any issues. Whenever they've had a big event there, they always get a call in advance telling them. And they said it's really up to the city to make the decision, not them, but they didn't have a problem with what's been happening. So, Mr. Mayor, you had a discussion with the Colonel also.
Do you like to?
Mayor?
Thank you, Councilman Hare. Following a meeting with the base commander, we emphasized as much was the concern of many of the members of council as is, I'm sure, the concern of the entire council, the potential of that Dover Air Force Base has on this community as an impact engine. They generate $94 million in revenue for the city of Dover. And we made it very explicitly clear that we wanted to maintain that relationship with Dover Air Force Base. We reiterated to the wing commander our commitment to the safety and the thriving of Dover Air Force Base and working with them as a good neighbor and realizing that their mission superseded, you know, our authority in any infraction on that. They did request, the request was made, that they be notified when permits for these events were to be pulled and that they be reviewed, and that we continue our vigilance on any future entities going into the area that's dictated by the crash zone and their crash plan. So I feel very satisfied that we continue to have the great working relationship with Dover Air Force Base and that the agreement that we have in place with Fordham will not violate that trust and that working relationship that we have with Dover Air Force Base.
Any questions?
Councilman Hare? Do you want to respond to any of that? And then I have?
No, I think what the mayor said is basically what the wing commander told me, too. He said it's been, it's been working, and the initial, the initial contact, the initial contact with him, he told me, he said he thought it was, it wasn't an issue. And so we just wanted to get, let him talk to the mayor and myself.
Councilman Sutler. And then Councilman Hare.
I just wanted to thank the mayor and Councilman Hare for reaching out to the Dover Air Force Base and getting additional information in regards to this matter, because it was a very sensitive matter, and we do not, in my opinion, want to overstep our boundaries or create a bad taste in a neighboring relationship with the Dover Air Force Base. So with the research they have brought back and the comments that they have brought back in regards to the Dover Air Force Base, I move that we, I think it's the motion correct, I mean, there's an action that could be taken in regards to this matter.
I wanted to hear from Councilman Hare. Can I ask Councilman Hutchinson first, and then I'll come back?
Yes.
Councilman Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding the airbase, are they requesting a monthly schedule in writing to know exactly what events will be?
They would like advance notification when the, when the permits are pulled for events at Fordham. And I'd also, if I could respond, I'd like to thank Councilman Hossfeld for escorting us to the initial meetings, because I felt that it was important that we have, you know, his presence there as well. But we did, we did, they did want to review the permits as they come in 30 days in advance.
The only follow-up question on that, I know that some modification had been made with them in order to allow them to have some more events. How long was that for? And is that time period, is that now completed or not?
I believe it was through the end of the calendar year.
Right.
And one of the actions that we may want to entertain, as we get up to Councilman Sutler, I think wants to raise the motion, is to just extend that period another calendar year.
80 hours.
80 hours. 80 hours per calendar year.
Yeah. And, Mr. Mayor, are you still in high hopes of getting something from the legal department in writing pertaining to this?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. But until then, I think that, basically, the wishes that have been expressed to us are, you know, I think they're within reason and still protect the integrity of the mission of Dover Air Force Base, which is job one for the city of Dover to do.
And I will also add that the Colonel, the wing commander did relay, tell me, because we were on a trip, that they don't have issues with, if it's a two-hour thing, they're more concerned with the big events that are, a lot of people will be there. That's what their main, their main concern was.
Councilman Hossfeld, and then I'll go back to Councilman Sutler.
Whose responsibility is it going to be to make notification?
I think since the permits are pulled, Councilman Hossfeld, that they, it's my opinion that since they would be pulled through the planning and inspections department, that, that they could be relayed through, through the wing commander's office. If not, if there's a difficulty, once the permits are pulled, they can notify me, and I'll make sure they're hand-carried.
Or we could put, make it the responsibility of the requesting party, that they have made that notification.
Whatever.
I'm worried about extra work.
Right.
Because I don't know.
Whatever your pleasure would be, I can hand-carry them or however, however council wants to handle that.
Councilman Hare?
I think Fordham has been doing it in the past, notifying the base. That's my understanding. If they continue to do that, just call the wing commander's office and let them know that there's an event.
Okay.
I apologize. Councilman Hossfeld, you still have?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Did you call me?
To be very honest with everybody, you know, I didn't understand what the Board of Adjustments was, or what their purpose was. And looking at their agenda and researching a little bit, this still seems to me, this is an issue for the Board of Adjustments. I don't understand why we're changing an ordinance that doesn't need to be changed. It's a simple request. They go to the Board of Adjustments, they have the support of the airbase, they get it done, rather than us changing an ordinance that I still feel can open up Pandora's Box. So for that reason, I think everybody understands where I stand on this, but I just, we're, I don't know why we're not using the procedures that are put in place for this.
Councilman Neal?
My concern is that we, in the comments that Councilman Hare made, it was what we were doing in the past was okay, and they didn't have a problem with it. But my understanding is that the Fordham and Dominion has expanded what they are going to do. And my concern still remains, the fact is that it is a change, a significant change in what they're going to do. And I know that the city's position is, we want to protect the business that is existing at Fordham and Dominion. I still am concerned about an expansion or whether they believe that there's an expansion. The Board of Adjustments, going through the Board of Adjustments works, then why change the ordinance as Councilman Hossfeld has indicated?
I guess further discussion, on the sake of my colleagues.
So I would like to ask Planning Director Amory Townsend, hearing the concerns of our fellow, my fellow council colleagues, would we actually need to change the ordinance?
I believe you would either need to change the ordinance, or they would need to go to the Board of Adjustment. Those are the two options. And so the, the motion, or the action that came out of committee was about whether or not you change the ordinance, and there was, that was the motion that came out of committee, to change it to 80 hours a year.
Okay. And my final question is, the activity that Fortham Brewery has been conducting recently, has it consisted of currently 80 hours of additional activity, so, or not?
As of last week, they were at 39 hours since the beginning of July. So for five months of the year, they were at 39 hours. They were almost at the 40-hour limit.
I guess my, my final concern is, I think at the last meeting, or not last meeting, but the last time this was brought up, I think I was under impression that they had conducted additional activities that you were concerned, planning zoning division or department was concerned about, and sort of deemed it as violation, which we need, or am I incorrect?
No, the issue is that from a zoning standpoint, the facility is a manufacturing facility, and the events that they're having are a public assembly use, which is not permitted in the accident potential zones. So we had to look at the public gatherings as a temporary use, which, under the ordinance as it's currently written, is limited to five days.
Thank you.
I'm just going to offer some comments that I believe, we run the risk of overthinking, overregulating this issue. One of the reasons, Board of Adjustment, it's always been an option to have Fordham go to the Board of Adjustment. But when we had this discussion previously, we all heard how expensive that is for a small business to go to the Board of Adjustment, that the burden of proof is very high, and it's, it's placed on the business owner. We also, at least I think, should honor the good faith arrangement we made when we left the room last time this was here, which was, we're going to go out to the base and ask them what they think about it, and if they don't have a problem with it, we're just going to let out 80 more hours a year. That's what we'll do. And that seems to me that we've all crossed this together, Fordham, the base, and us, and this is where we are. We went out and set out to do what we were going to do.
Councilman Sutler?
Thank you, Council President Slaven. And with that said, I would like to make a motion to grant the Fortham Brewery to the 80 hours extended for the calendar year due to the fact that we have shown good faith, they have shown good faith and waited on the research that the mayor and Councilman Hare has brought back, and I think that it's only fair and just that we move forward as we said that we would do after the research was brought to us at the table. So with that said, I move to grant them the 80 hours extended in good faith as we stated we would do.
Second. Motion been made by Councilman Sutler, seconded by Councilman Neal. Simply, if I could restate it, simply extend an additional 80 hours for calendar year 2017, where the brewery operate as they have.
Correct.
Discussion, Councilman Hare?
I think, I just want to mention one thing, that I think it's, if Fordham decides during this year they want to go to Board of Adjustment and get, get it changed, then what happens, right now, the 80 hours, I can tell you, does not cover all their events for the year. They do some of their events, they have to take them off-site to do others, so, because obviously, right now, they're at 39 hours, and they still got another month to go. So they're going to be doing off-site events and different things. So the 80 hours does not cover everything that they're going to need. So if they decide to go to the Board of Adjustment, that'd be their decision to make, but I think the 80 hours is good, and if we need to change it, we can renew it for next year, and so forth. But I think it's a good decision.
Councilman Hossfeld?
Sorry, I can't help myself. So you're telling us that they're already exceeding the 80 hours that we're going to change the ordinance to? And so then they should go to the Board of Adjustment. Why don't we just send it to the Board of Adjustment to begin with?
To respond to that is, if we send it to the Board of Adjustment and they approve, then they might be getting 130, 140, they could do whatever. I mean, the 80 hours has a little control on it.
But we already, you just told us they're going to exceed that.
But they go outside, they go somewhere else and do other events. They do, they, they might go to the museum, they might go to the Ag Museum, there are different places to do some events also, you know, because the 80 hours does not cover everything they want. So that's what I'm saying. The 80 hours will suffice what they could do there, and it doesn't, it doesn't upset the base with the 80 hours. If they get an adjustment, they might get 120 hours, they might get, you know, do more there. It'd be a benefit, but that'd be their decision if they want to go to the Board of Adjustment. The 80 hours, the base, that's what the mayor and I discussed with the wing commander, the 80 hours, and they were fine with it.
Before, along everybody else in that zone's done the same thing.
If there's other breweries in there that have 80 hours, want 80 hours, then right now, they're the only one.
I have, Councilman Hossfeld?
Number one, I'd like to find out, how many actual events do we have a month? And how many are onsite versus how many are off-site?
So hang on one second, I need a motion to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Tell to speak. So is there a motion? So moved. Second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Hausfeld, second by Councilman Herr, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So the rules are suspended, so we can allow Mr. Telly to introduce himself.
Ryan Telly, Fifty Stable Way, Clayton, Delaware. The, the, the most events that we've ever had in a single month at the brewery have been two. Typically, on an average, there's one event every month, and it consists of three hours from five to eight o'clock. The eighty hours that we're proposing is something that we can manage with onsite. That means that we won't pre-plan any more than eighty hours in 2017. So is that what we want? No, but we can certainly live with that. I mean, with the amount of breweries that are in the country, or even in the state, I mean, they're doing it on a daily basis, and I understand that they are not manufacturing facilities, they are built to entertain. But in order for us to compete and to grow, we need to be able to have people see our world. And so with that eighty hours, we can make that work. Yes, we will have to pre-plan other events outside of our brewery, because we know that we will be at that eighty. We're at thirty-nine right now, we won't have a single event for the rest of the year, because we promised that we would be within forty hours for the remaining six months of sixteen. We're at thirty-nine, we can't possibly do anything in an hour at our brewery, so we'll sit at thirty-nine, or, yeah, we'll sit at thirty-nine until January one, until we can approve this eighty-hour permit. So there won't be anything happening at the brewery until January one. So, yeah, I mean, that's it.
How many times a month do you go off-site?
I mean, we're off-site in different states, but in the state of Delaware, I mean, there's, there's standard sales and marketing type things that we do, but two to three, and those are at various, you know, locations around, be it Dover or just the state of Delaware, for marketing purposes, or, you know, collaboration things that we do, but that's sales team-oriented, they're planned on a different budget, and anything that we do at the brewery is done by pulling the permit, by, you know, by, by tracking the hours, and so on and so forth.
Well, I certainly would hope that you and every one of your employees understand that our concern is the encroachment issue on Dover Air Force Base.
One hundred percent, absolutely.
And that is a very serious concern.
Understood.
And when I look at the increased activity that you're having, and if you follow the guidelines, and I, I would only ask if we're going to make a change, that it be on a temporary basis, in ninety days at best, until which time we have at least some feedback in writing from the legal department at Dover Air Force Base.
Right. So the, and I understand what you're saying, I can, I can promise you that the eighty hours that we're asking for is way less than what we've done for the last probably few years. I mean, I mean, we've, we've done this, and, and, and we, and it's just kind of surfaced this year, you know, so we want to make sure that we're doing it right, and, and it's something that we all agree upon. Five days in a calendar year to have, for our small business, it, it just would, it would, it would diminish any potential of future success, it's just not possible in any small business, especially in the beer industry. I mean, if we had a product that would sell itself, I mean, we would be home with our families rather than doing this, but we have to educate people and touch people on a daily basis in order to do that, and I wish that wasn't the case, but unfortunately it is.
All right, Councilman Sutherland, and then Councilman.
Yes, Mr. Telly.
Sure.
If city council, if we grant you these eighty hours, do you feel as though the eighty hours will allow you to receive monetary stability to go forth to the Board of Adjustments within a year or two, for additional hours if deemed necessary by your company?
I can, I can talk to, to my business partner, my business partners and see. I don't see why it wouldn't help, certainly.
Right.
But it's ultimately not my sole decision.
Right.
I would have to talk to them. I know that right now, to go there, that's not something that we can financially do, but I think that over the next, you know, year or two, if the business is continuing to grow the way it is, then certainly.
Thank you very much for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Councilman Cole.
I understand the Board of Adjustment could be somewhat financially expensive, but as far as, what is the makeup of your business partners, like, are they all small business owners, or are they?
They are. So, so there's, there's, there's two main owners. One is actually, is a logistics company owner, he's kind of all over the world, so I've only met him twice. And this is not something that he, he's not a big backer of kind of deal, like, he's just a friend of the, the, the primary owner. The primary owner has his bunny wrapped up in restaurants in the state of Maryland. And this was just something that he, he ventured into, because one of his restaurants started as a brew pub, and it grew, the beer outgrew the brew pub, so they needed to find space to mass produce, and so now it's in Dover.
Are there any corporations tied in at all to your?
I mean, there's, there's, there's a thirty-three percent Anheuser-Busch ownership, but they don't even claim us. They don't, they don't help us financially at all, they don't help with any sort of distribution on any mass scale.
What's their role in that?
The role was in order for one of the brands to obtain the second brand, so Fordham and Dominion are two separate brands. Fordham was the original owner and, and original brand portfolio. In order to acquire Dominion back in 2006, they needed some backing through Anheuser-Busch. They helped do that, and have essentially been silent owners since. Like I said, no financial, no financial help, no, it's a vacancy on, you know, the, the board, just completely absent, honestly.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Neal.
Have you ever thought of Clydesdale Races out of Dover Downs as a promotion aspect?
You know, it is the three-hundredth anniversary, it's possible.
Well, there you are. So, Councilman Hausfeld, do you think you can make arrangements for a Clydesdale Race?
I'll do what I can.
Thank you, sir.
We do have a motion before us to extend the additional eighty hours for the calendar year 2017. There's no further discussion?
One last, Washington Council. My biggest concern is that, you know, when business owners come to us, and we say, we asked them to be patient, we asked them that, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and we'll get back with you, and this is okay, then we're going to move forward. I think that we have to honor our word, and I think our word is our bond, and, you know, back to what Council President said, we said that this is what we would do, once that was done, then we would move forward. And so with that said, I just wanted to remind my fellow councilmen, that this is what we said we were going to do. The information has come back, and I think the only good faith thing to do is move forward on this. So with that said, I'm going to be supporting it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, there's no further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Time clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sutherland.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Cole.
No.
Mr. Hausfeld.
No.
Mr. Herr.
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson.
No.
Mr. Slaven.
Yes, motion passed, it's five-three. I'll now entertain a motion to accept the report of the council committee of the whole Legislative Finance Administration Committee.
So moved.
Second.
By Councilman Sutherland, second by Councilman Neal, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That was Councilman Lewis for the record.
Councilman Lewis. Say, Councilman Neal?
He did.
My apologies to both of you. Next item before us is item number six-C, three-C, 2016-27, amending chapter eighteen as section eighteen-four, running at large, section eighteen. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Our next item is Agenda Item Six-C-one from Legislative Finance and Administration, number fifteen, 2016, Customer Service Staffing Plan. Request that Councilman Herr brief us on this item.
It was brought before the Legislative Finance Committee, the proposal to increase the level of employees in customer service, and there was really no recommendation. It was decided to send it to council for further discussion and a decision tonight. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hudson.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Hudson.
Good evening.
Good evening. I believe you had instructions from Council Committee to hold provided staffing plan.
That is correct.
The timing of the proposed hiring, and then you backed on this.
Correct. Can we, one more, one more, that's it. No, back. There it is. It's kind of hard to see from here, but I'm assuming that all of you might be able to see a little bit better on your tablets, or however you're looking at it. I'll briefly go over it. You will notice that the chart has been broken up into four different areas. The first top part, and you'll see a number, we used to have names put these, but I had to take the names out, because it is personnel, and it's out in the public, so I removed the names. But the, the first part on top, where you see current vacancies, these are the vacancies that we are working on right now. And if you look to the, if you, if you go all the way to the right and then move in, okay, you'll see across the tops, you know, it, it has all of the information that council was looking for. You have the, I should have brought my glasses, I'm so sorry. Can I?
There's no shortage of glasses in the house, if you'd like to borrow.
Okay. We have where it's, we have where it was vacated by, we have the vacated date, the reason for vacancy, and then permission to recruit, I think that was one of the things that council was really interested in, position, with the post date, when it was actually posted, and then also we have on the chart, the interviews, when the interviews are set up, and then the candidate to be chosen, and then at the end would be the hiring date. So that's what we're working on right now. Down below that, slightly down below that, go up a little bit, please, just go up a little bit higher.
What?
No, down, 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 down. Okay. Additional vacancies. Now these, we have two people, I had talked about that last time, Denise Brogerson, who is our customer service supervisor, she about two weeks, two and a half weeks ago, submitted her letter that she is retired, so surely we're going to miss a very important person in, in the, in the organization. Ryan Carroll, who is in Metering, who started off in Metering, will be going back to Metering. Currently, Ryan, many of you probably have seen him, and I've also heard very good things about him from some, some council members that had to deal with him when they were a customer. Ryan would wear a couple hats, he was either out on the floor in the customer service area, or he was also as a cashier. So he is moving back downstairs to Metering where he originally came from, and that's going to be a great addition for those guys down there, because they're, they're missing some people down there. If we go to the next area, slide it over just a little bit that way, there we go, that area where you see the big new positions, those are the positions that I, we are seeking, in addition to backfilling, the ones that we just talked about up on top. As you can see, we don't, none of the stuff to the left is even matters, because we need a brand-new position that we're asking for. New position, brand-new, in that they haven't been around, and why? If you look to, go back over, back that way? Yeah, okay. Again, permission to recruit, that's one we're, we're, we got, we're working on, hopefully. Position, posting date, and then everything else is TBT, to be determined. Finally, this is the part that kind of bothers us a little bit. If you look, slide back a little bit this way, there we go, succession planning. We have seven people starting in, starting in January, that will be eligible for retirement. Now, none of us have heard anything about any of these folks retiring, but that could happen. And generally, when people retire, you're lucky if you hear any, anything, you know, ahead of time. It's usually a letter comes in and say, hey, I'm sorry, I'm retiring. So again, we have a total of seven people, at some point in the future, will be, will be potentially leaving us. At the bottom, this is information that came from the Human Resources Department, and in particular, I think what everybody's really looking for, aside from, well, we're really candid, down at bottom, and that where it's highlighted in yellow, that is the total big picture of what it's going to cost, one hundred and ninety-four thousand. Now, I know that I was asked to talk about the impact on the budget. Now, if you recall, in the last Legislative Finance Administrative Committee meeting, we had pointed out, and it was also, it was also co-signed, if you will, by Finance Director, or Donna Mitchell, that we had, in three different areas, carry forward of ability, in that we had, from the electric fund, approximately sixty thousand nine thirty-seven fifty, wastewater, water fund was nineteen thousand five ninety-seven, and then general fund, sixteen thousand nine sixty-five. What we found out recently, and this came from a quick memo from Ms. Mitchell, in that for seventeen, we're also looking at an additional forty-five, forty-five thousand six ninety-five, and that's from carrying forward personnel savings from unspent, unspent money for this And I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Hudson. Councilman Hutchinson, then Councilman Herr.
You know, I, I just want to share my experience that I personally had with the department, and, and again, I look upon the staff and the personnel that worked there. That job is very, very demanding and very important. But at the same time, when you make a phone call, and you get no answer, and it rings and rings and rings, that's wrong. We have to be able to take care of customers' needs, and quite frankly, we're not doing that. I personally had a bad experience, like Councilman Sutherland had a bad experience. That's not fair to the employees, and certainly not fair to our customer base. And I absolutely, very strongly, support addressing this issue, adding the current staff that's needed to be able to take care of customer service, and take care of our employees, and doing the job that they're supposed to do.
Thank you for those comments, and I have to agree with you wholeheartedly. A part of some of the, the problem when trying to staff for some of these positions, people generally think that, you know, all, all they do, customer service people, sit there, answer the phone, take your money, and that's the end of it. There is so much more to that job, and I'm not even talking about the heat that these individuals take when the lines aren't moving fast enough. And again, you know, we've been, I've been at this now for about a year now, where Mr. Conigan had asked me to go in and help oversee the operations. So what we're asking for, those additional five people, this by no means puts us into a position where we could sit back and relax, have some downtime. Everything that I'm asking for, I, we need, and I assure you that a lot of the complaints that you're talking about right now will disappear if I get the people that I'm asking for.
Councilman Herr.
I, I, I tend to agree with Councilman Hutchinson to a certain degree, but I think we need to be back to our full manning level first, back to full staff, because right now, we're having these delays based on we're down five, four, five, six people. I think it behooves us to get back to our full manning level, and then see how it works before we decide whether to add another six, seven people.
And, and, you know, Councilman Herr, I, I hear, I hear you loud and clear, but if you, if, many of you remember, just prior to me getting here, when they were at that level, if you want to call it full staff, it wasn't working then. And that was why I was asked to come in and see what I could do about looking at things differently. It wasn't, the staffing level wasn't working. It wasn't, the staffing level wasn't working then. And then, what compounded the problem is when we started having some of the people leaving, one or two at a time, then it just got worse. But we were never at an optimal level. If you recall back in two years ago, there were still complaints about the long lines, there were still complaints about people being on, you know, waiting on the phone, maybe not to the tune of forty-five minutes, but certainly twenty-five minutes, a half hour. So all we would be doing is going back to what I, in the beginning of what I was trying to fix. And, you know, we would love to be able to wave a magic wand and say, okay, we're going to get all eleven, or how many ever people in there at once, but that's just not going to happen. You know, it takes time for us to get the right person. I could tell you firsthand, when it came time for one of the positions that we were looking for, for just a regular customer service agent, we had over a hundred applications for one position. And when we went through that, after going through everything, we had maybe three people that we seriously considered looking at. Everybody else were just putting in applications because they needed a job, and they didn't have the skill set. And one of the things that I, I had made a promise, I made a promise to my boss, I made a promise to the mayor, and I made a promise to the staff, I said, when it's all said and done, I want this to be one of the premier departments of the city. Because when I came here, all I heard was negative stuff about the department, and how things are just messy over there. So I took the challenge, and I said, okay, I'm going to come in, and I'm going to do better than just straightening out. I want this to be the department where people aren't trying to run away from, but saying, you know what, maybe I'd like to go work over there. But I can't do it if I don't have the people. And you are correct, all of you saying, it's not fair to any of our constituents, your constituents, any of the residents. If I'm taking time on my lunch hour from my job, and I want to go pay my bill, I should be in and out. I should not be wasting my entire time either waiting on the phone to get service, or being online.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. It was a pleasure, Councilman. Councilman Close.
I think it's important that we provide our constituents with essential services, and this is an essential service. And, you know, as you indicated, you can assure me and this council that it will not affect the budget, and there is funding in the budget, and we won't have to raise taxes because of this. I therefore can support it. And I thank you for your initiative in preparing this, this whole, you know, presentation.
Thank you. Councilman Sutler, then Councilman Cole, then Councilman Housefield, then Councilman...
A quick question, two questions, actually. Is the utilities department our main source of income in regards to our moneymaker for the city of Dover?
It's our largest.
Okay. Yes, our largest.
It's our largest, yes.
Okay. So as a business owner, you know, I know the importance of good customer service as a business model. If we do not have good customer service, then our business model will depreciate, and profits will be affected. So with that said, you know, I support fully the staff that you are recommending. I feel that is very vital, important imperative, that we give you the staff that you need to be successful, so that our constituents will feel that their needs are being addressed ASAP, and that the frustration that they're feeling, that I'm feeling as a consumer, will no longer be in existence. Thank you.
Councilman Cole.
Hi. And I know, we've kind of talked about it, but, so, is this, this might be a Mr. Conigan or Ms. Mitchell question. So have we done this before, where we're not fully staffed, but midway through a budget year, we ask for additional staff in departments being down?
Yes, it has happened, by the largest being the addition of an officer, as three budget cycles. One, one thing that I'm uncertain of, I think the initial memo indicated we were actually asking for an increase in the budget for customer service area of about ninety-seven thousand dollars for FY seventeen. And that additional funding would come from carryforwards from FY sixteen, and be funded if council authorized it when we bring the budget amendment forward. So the initial memo was that that extra cost be funded in that avenue. The information in the, in the email indicates that we have some salary savings and things like that, that are running in the current budget for FY seventeen, at least in the general fund. But there will be a budget adjustment that needs to be made, I believe, at least in water and sewer and electric, that would cover the additional costs associated with this. So the annualized cost, and that was one of the questions, to fully fund the proposal in FY seventeen dollars was a hundred and roughly a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars full year, everybody on board. If you take, what's the FY eighteen cost of that same thing, you're probably looking at three to five percent increase, because there will be a step increase that's under contract, and there may be some adjustments related to medical insurance that we were not sure of the cost at this point. So the FY eighteen cost of the proposal is probably in the neighborhood of two hundred and five thousand dollars. If, if it is fully staffed all year from day one, from July one of seventeen to June thirtieth of eighteen, that expected cost would be roughly, I want to say, two hundred and five thousand dollars.
And when you said we did that with the police department, we did raise taxes at that point?
Yes, but that, that, there was a combination of things that happened with that. Those ten positions were authorized in, I believe, December. We sent several to the academy in the springtime, and then we sent the balance of the complement to the academy in September of that, that next year. And in the intervening time between December and July, there was a proposed tax increase that was accompanied that budget. One of the drivers was the additional police officers. And in the case of the police department, if you look at the police department's budget, it probably took, probably two budget cycles to see the full cost of that, because there were additional costs that had to be woven into the budget over more than one cycle to get the full cost of those ten officers in the budget. Those officers, I believe now, if I ask the chief, are fully staffed, at least they're in the academy at this point, and are making their way out to the streets shortly. In this case, we do have existing positions that we're recruiting. Mr. Hudson has been through those. We have two retirements that are going to happen, or two vacancies that are, that are happening. One is because of a retirement, one is because of a person that's going back to the area where they were. So we have vacancies that we have to address with that, plus the additional positions. So the chances of us needing ninety-five thousand or ninety-seven thousand dollars between, if council authorizes this tonight and June thirtieth of this year, that's probably a slight overestimate of the amount of money that we would need, because we're going to have to get those positions filled. And as Mr. Hudson indicates, there's been a lot of interest, but as the, kind of the funnel whittles, whittles down to the people that are both interested and qualified, and that we want to represent our customers, that, that group of people tends to narrow, and it will take us some time to get fully staffed on that. But from this, from, from the management standpoint, if it's authorized tonight, then we actually have the goal in mind and can work to getting that fully staffed, and those costs will hit the full budget, full year cost would hit the full budget in FY eighteen.
Thank you. All right. Councilman Housefield, then Councilman Herr.
Councilman Housefield.
Thank you, sir. So, in your opinion, Mr. Hudson, there wouldn't be a tax increase in our next fiscal year to cover this?
Yes.
You can guarantee me there's not going to be a tax increase?
Well, this is, this is what the figures are showing.
Councilman?
Mr. Conigan?
We cannot. We cannot guarantee at this point, we cannot guarantee at this point that there will not be any rate increases or tax increases as part of the FY eighteen budget.
I agree. That's the point I'm trying to make. So if we're looking at this, you're telling me, if we go to next year, so, looking at an item coming on down the agenda, we're possibly looking at about three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars we're going to add to the budget, and we haven't even started the budget process for next year. We want...
Are you talking about the second request?
Yes.
Potentially.
Yeah, potentially, we're adding three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to a budget. We haven't even started yet, and someone's telling me we're not going to have a tax increase. I want us to have all the staff too, but we're not even fully staffed. We don't even know where we've been, so let's get fully staffed, come back to me with the numbers, tell us where we're at, tell us where our call volume's at, tell us how much time it's taken when we're fully staffed. But until we get there, I can't support this. I mean, if we didn't learn our lesson three budget cycles ago, with what happened with public, in the interest of public safety, and that's how we sold the nineteen percent tax increase, was in the interest of public safety, I don't know how we get there. I can't, I just can't support it. I want to support, support the workforce, but with this plan, I can't do it. We've got to be fully staffed, and you've got to give me some numbers based on that.
Okay, and I hear what you're saying, Councilman, but again, I'm getting, we're getting back to where it was when I, when I first got here, and it wasn't working then. So, okay, we get fully staffed where we were two years ago.
But we didn't hear that then.
I'm sorry?
We didn't hear that then. No one came to me then and said, or came to us and said, we need to do this.
Well, no one from the department, they feel, even had a voice. I'm probably the first time that's actually stuck up for, for that, for that whole crew.
City manager.
Well, again, I don't want, I don't want this body to be disillusioned, just because we get back to say, okay, Mr. Hudson, you're at full staff, we're still going to have the same problems. They're not going to go away. And, and I'm just hoping that if that's the, if that's the route that we're going to take, I really am asking and hoping that I get the leeway further down the line to make things better, when I'm asking for that right now. This is not going to disappear, just because I'm full staff.
Councilman Herr, and then Councilman Cole.
Councilman Housefield pretty much covered what I was going to say. My concern was, when you get full staff, then come back, and we'll see how, take a look at it, but to say, let's hire another seven people, and we don't even, we don't know if we're going to have to raise it. I just wanted to get back to full staff, and then see where we are, and if we have to hire two people, maybe we don't need seven people, maybe we only need three people. I mean, we haven't been full staff for so long, we don't know.
Well, can I, let me double back for one second. If any of you have had an opportunity to take a look at what we're proposing, I mean, it's more than just bodies, where the, where those people are showing up, okay? For example, we would now have five full-time customer service agents in the front. Now, some of them are still going to be responsible for servicing a customer, and at this, and then when that customer is done, getting on the phone. Now, we have, as a proposal, two part-time people who would be in a call center which is already made up. Those folks, at staggering times, would be answering the phone. So we wouldn't necessarily have all five people out in front having to man the phone. We'd have dedicated people in the back, and during high-volume times, we can pick and choose one or two people out on the floor. So that's going to make things a lot faster for our call. Secondly, we're having full-time people instead of part-time people out on the floor. You don't, we're going to have qualified people that are there all the time, instead of somebody that's there for five, maybe five weeks or so after we've trained them, and then they're out the door because they found a full-time job. So it eliminates all those things. We will also have a full-time collector, which we haven't had in many years. It is our hope that with the full-time collector, as soon as that person, or as soon as that individual is one day late, we've got somebody on the phone right off the bat, which what we're hoping, that will help cut down on those individuals that we have to send out our meter readers out to cut, cut power. Now, yes, we are sending accounts, our older accounts, to Sims, our new collections agency, but those are the old stuff that we couldn't get under regular circumstances before. So we have a plan. We also have, we're also looking for the backfill of somebody in, in the cashier's department, which they, you know, they take a lot of money.
I have, Mr. Conigan, I think, wanted to provide some clarification, then Councilman Cole.
Thank you. This staffing level, the total staffing level, takes us back to roughly the same staffing level we were in FY two thousand eight. The positions are in different places, because in two thousand eight, we had a number of meter readers, and the new technology has taken over. Problem that we're experiencing is, is that there are more accounts. There are, in some cases, hundreds more accounts. You know, we've added Leander Lake's apartment complex right next to the new Dover High. That represents hundreds of accounts, and it represents hundreds of rentals, which are more time-intensive than a single-family homeownership, because they turn over more. We need to get copies of their leases, we need to have lease addendums, we have to have a number of different things associated with rental properties. So there's been a discussion at the council level about the number of rental properties in the city. The number of rental properties in the city has a direct effect on this operation. We were asked by council members, because they were concerned about the level of service, to come before council with a proposal to resolve that level of service. And that's why we're here, because we heard from more than one council person that they were dissatisfied with the level of service. From the staffing standpoint, we have spent a better part of five years trying to hold the line, reduce staff, to the point where some things, some systems, have failed. And I've heard the brunt of that discussion from a number of members of council, because we've cut back to the point where the system, where the activity, has basically reached the failure point. This is the area that collects roughly a hundred and forty million dollars of revenue for the city, from what are insured payments to tax payments to miscellaneous bills, a hundred and forty, a hundred and thirty million dollars runs through this office. That's the cash register for us. When we try to get our customers to pay us on time, we can't even cut the number of people that owe us money and keep up with that, because we not only have the activity of creating the cut list, we have the cuts, and then we have the reconnects, that simply can't be done with the number of people that are assigned to these activities. And so what that leaves us with, in some cases, is a growing level of money owed to the city of Dover, which is not a comfortable position to be sitting here talking to you about, because we're the ones that are held accountable to collect the funds. So I understand the frustration that we're here in the middle of the budget year, but we're here because several members of council asked us to prepare a plan and bring it forward. Can it wait until the next, you know, full budget? It could. The decisions will not get any easier, I can tell you that. It won't get any cheaper, because these five people will still be, you know, roughly a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars if we hire them in July of next year versus, you know, potentially January of this year. We cannot, in the current environment, guarantee, Councilman Housefield, that there will not be a tax increase proposed, or a utility rate increase proposed, because of really things that are happening around us. We simply don't know what the state is going to do regarding state revenues. This proposal, you know, two hundred thousand dollars roughly annualized, on a hundred and forty million dollars of revenue, is not, in the big picture, a lot of money in the, in the big context of the budget. But when you start adding, you know, three or four different things to it, the answer is, it's going to be tough to bring in a balanced budget for FY eighteen. it's going to be tough to bring in a balanced budget for FY18. However, this is an area where, you know, there are a number of people that have day-to-day interaction with this department and they're dissatisfied with it. And it's not because the employees are not trying to provide that level of service. It is a difficult environment. Some of the customers are angry. Everybody wants, you know, immediate service as soon as they walk in. Nobody likes to stand in line and nobody likes to wait to be addressed for these types of activities. So we're in a, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. We want to provide the level of service, but we simply can't do it with the existing people. If you add in vacations or lunchtime or auto accidents or illness, it makes the worse, it makes the problem even worse as we go forward. We have on the page, you know, we have retirements. These are people that have been here 25-plus years in most cases, at least 20, but usually 25. And when we lose a 25-year employee, it is not a one-to-one replacement. So when you, when you lose a 25-year employee that has been working in this system for 25 years, knows the utility billing and the accounting and the customer service side of it and you hire somebody new and it takes a year or more to learn the job and then it takes a substantial amount of time to gain the experience. So it's not a one-to-one replacement. We would not be here tonight if it wasn't for the fact that we've been asked to be here to address this issue and I'm hopeful that council will authorize us the additional funds to address the issue so that we can go back, finish the plan, put together the level of service, and that will reduce the complaints that you're receiving with respect to this activity.
Councilman Cole and then Councilman.
And I know we talked about it in committee and it was brought up kind of at the end of our discussion, but I think there is some room for two, I mean, I, you know, like two positions or, you know, I don't know what I'm trying to say here, but as far as, but some kind of compromise that I think would kind of move us forward hopefully, so I don't, just my thoughts.
Councilman Sutler then Councilman Hare.
First, I would like to say thank you, City Manager Scott Koenig, and also Assistant City Manager Kirby Hudson. I was one of the council persons who did ask you to do that because I can no longer stand by and watch my constituents be frustrated and get the calls I've been getting in addition to my personal concerns and, and, and watch our customer service depreciate based off of the budget, although I do, I do respect my colleagues' concerns about the budget. But we have our first priority to our constituents and if our constituents are saying this is not working, we have to rectify that problem. And that is the tough decision that we have to make as council persons in this position. And so with that said, I will be supporting this staff recommendation and also would like to thank the employees that have sacrificed their vacation time that has been deferred to when we can give it to them rather than when they want to take it. I don't think it's fair to our employees that we play with their vacation time because we can't come to an agreement to authorize staff to give them the adequate employees that we need to make our customer service a great customer service for the city of Dover. Thank you.
Councilman Hare, then Councilman Hosfeld.
When was the last time this, this office was fully staffed?
I'd have to go back and look at the numbers, but I would say it's probably been fully staffed maybe as early as two years ago. Been down a couple people for the last two years.
Okay, so for the last two years, we've been working not fully staffed, but now all of a sudden, we need five more people. We don't know if, like Councilman Cole said, maybe two. I just think we need to be back to fully staffed, fully operational and then see if we need two more people, three more people, seven more people, what we need. I just, we haven't been fully staffed for two years, so, you know, now we can, we know we need seven more people.
Well, two years ago, we couldn't, we didn't even have enough people to go out and make cuts.
But this is brought to us now, not two years ago.
Okay.
And now we're saying, well, we know now we need seven more people.
Well, I can't.
And we're not fully staffed for two years, but we know we need seven more people.
No, we're not saying seven.
Five, full-time.
We're saying five full-time. Some of these part-timers were created out of a full-time position several years ago because we, you know, tried to maximize the number of hours that were available. So I don't have the actual, you know, tables in front of me as to when everything was fully staffed, but I believe it's been probably two years since we were fully staffed in this area. As I said, in addition to that, we've had a number of retirements that create additional challenges. So we're not asking for seven. The request is five and then takes the number of part-timers from four to two. So there's a reduction in part-time staff and an increase in full-time staff.
Councilman Hosfeld.
Can I ask Mr. Devine to go back to the sheet? I think it was a graph that you come up with. I don't know the title of it.
That one?
Yes. So we lost an employee.
Up on top, yeah, all those are gone.
So January 20th, we lost that employee and it took us three, four months to get to permission to recruit date.
Right, this was a collections position. Part of the reason it was being held was because the staff was asking to convert it to full-time. This is prior to council members getting interested in this issue.
Okay. All right, thank you. If I can, can I ask Mr. Sutler a question? How many complaints have you had?
I don't know offhand, but I have various complaints.
Five, 10?
I don't know offhand, I can't answer that.
I mean, there has to be, if it's significant.
Quite, quite often, I don't know.
So we have 38,000 people in the city?
I have 30 units myself and all of them complained.
So these are people that?
So, and they complained various times.
So these are people that lease your property, is what you're telling me?
In addition to others in the fourth district.
But how many? Any idea?
No, Councilman Hosfeld, I just said I can't answer that.
38,000 people in the city and we're advocating for?
Council, President.
What's the percentage of 30, 30 and two, 38,000? What's that percentage?
I've answered the question.
Anybody?
All right.
So we're going to raise, I'm sorry, I'm not done yet. So we're, you're advocating possibly raising taxes to?
I've answered a question, Councilman Hosfeld.
That's fine, I'm just making a statement.
I'm sorry it's not satisfactory, but I've answered the question.
Oh, it's not even close to my satisfaction.
Thank you, okay. I've already answered a question, so please, at this point, you're badgering me.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are. Because I asked me a repeated question and I've answered it.
All right. Councilman Hosfeld.
It may not be what you want to hear, but I've answered it.
You still have the floor, I'm going to ask you if you can.
I said, "I don't know."
Thank you, Councilman Sutler. Councilman Hosfeld.
So you make a statement that you have complaints, but you can't justify it. You can't give me the numbers. It's a simple request. You gave me 30, but they happen to be people that lease your property.
I don't need to give you the numbers. I just told you it's a various amount. I don't need to give you 35, 45, 50.
We've exhausted the issue, questions have been asked.
This is ridiculous. It is. And the question you asked me is ridiculous. I answered it.
I'm going to look at a bigger picture.
Unbelievable.
The bigger picture is what is the image of the city and how do we basically serve our constituents? And basically, the complaints that have come not just from Councilman Sutler, but from Councilman Hutchinson and others is that we're not doing the job. Even if you have all of these people and we approve it tonight, and I will vote to approve it, it is going to take a long time before they basically are hired, they're trained, and are actually going to do the job that's necessary. And in the meantime, that money is not going to be spent until these people are hired and they're trained as they're getting in and getting geared up to do a job. They are people who are responsible for bringing money into the city, bringing money in that for things, for services that they're paying for. And I think that we have to give the chance for what we have discovered and what are we proposing in order to do this. You can't plug them in right away, it's not going to have an immediate result, it's going to take a period of time. But I think we have to give this plan a chance to perform and to do this. And you're not going to do this by waiting to see what happens when we get everybody hired that is authorized at this time. And it, basically, what has been said is that's not going to even do the job because you're only going to catch up to what you haven't done before. Let's give this thing a chance because it's going to take a while to get it done.
Councilman Hutchinson.
Oh, thank you. I base my feelings on this issue with my discussions with Mr. Kirby. Our Assistant City Manager has been a part of being there on an everyday basis for the last year and I have listened to his frustrations and his concerns and his complaints. Yes, it took a year for him to bring it forward, but I can assure you, based on my personal experience and listening to Kirby himself and talking about what he sees every day, the frustrations that's taking place in the workplace, and quite frankly, I don't think we have a choice. I think we have to step up to the plate and address this issue.
Councilman Hare.
I've heard everything that's been said and I'm just going to say that what Mr. Hutchinson said, I understand. This off, this office has not been fully staffed for two years. Why? Why aren't we making that a priority to get these positions filled? Why isn't our HR office out there getting these positions filled?
Mr. Hare.
I'm not done.
Excuse me, Mr. Koenig, Mr. Harris.
When, when we've gone two years and not had them filled and we're going and moving on, doing, doing, there might be some issues. I've been in there, I've seen lines, I've been in there where there hadn't been any lines, been in there where there's been lines and people sitting in the offices. So, yeah, maybe there are some complaints. I just feel that if we were fully staffed for the last two years and we were having these issues, okay. I'd just like to see where we, what it would be like if we had, if we are back to fully staffed and we get them in there and then bring it back and, I mean, at this rate, to get back to full staff could take six, eight months if you base it on what's been happening in the last two years. So with that in mind, until we're fully staffed, I can't support hiring another five full-time people.
Mr. Koenig.
I just, I'll defer my comments to later. I think we've done.
We do not have a motion on the floor at this time. Is there a motion? Councilman? Councilman Sutler.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
We do not have a motion.
Okay. Well, I move to accept staff recommendation to approve the five additional employees for the Utility Service Department to release stress.
Second motion.
Motion made by Councilman Sutler, seconded by Councilman Hutchinson to accept staff recommendation. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Hosfeld.
So for less than 1% of our population, we're going to do this. Amazing. Thank you.
Councilman Lewis.
I'd just like to make a comment and maybe Mr. Koenig could answer this question. I think he may have it ready, but I like to hear it again. I think the electric department is an important department in the city and, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Koenig, but hasn't the electric department in the past brought in revenue to offset tax increases?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion before us is to accept staff recommendation, item 30. Hold.
Mr. Sutler.
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Cole.
No.
Mr. Hosfeld.
No.
Mr. Hare.
No.
Mr. Hutchinson.
Yes.
Mr. Slaven.
Yes, motion passes 5-3. Now I have before us item 6C, 3C, Legislative Finance Administration, number 15, 20.
Item 6C, amending the, amending Chapter 18 Animal Section Running at Large. I will turn it over to Mr. Lewis, he wanted to.
Councilman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Hare. I just need a clarification. After our last council committee of the whole meeting, I went home and I reread the code and under Section 18-4 Running at Large B, the last sentence states, "Should any police officer or animal control officer be unable, after using reasonable and diligent efforts to apprehend such animal, he may destroy it." The word, it says, "He may destroy it," and the question I have, does that mean that, I mean, we know, all know mistakes happen if our animal hops the fence, our dog, and digs a hole under the fence and gets out and the animal control officer tries to apprehend the dog and, I mean, you know, I have a dog myself and my dog is not going to, you know, come running to the animal control officer or the police officer. It may be hesitant. Does that mean that the officer is going to be authorized to shoot the dog?
That's a question for Chief Brannan.
I'm a little confused. I mean, you're a dog lover yourself, Chief.
I am a fast canine officer, you're absolutely right. Have we destroyed dogs in the past? Yes, those are vicious dogs, not dogs that we just can't apprehend. But the way it's written, yes, it would be covered that way.
Okay.
The way it's written.
Then I would like to amend this ordinance, make a motion to amend this ordinance that it so states, "If the dog is vicious and attacks the officers..."
Well, it could attack other people as well.
Or other individuals. Because right now, how it's written, I mean, I would be pretty upset if my dog dug a hole, got underneath the fence, was at large and didn't, you know, come to the officer when the officer called it, that it was destroyed.
That motion.
So I would like to make a motion to amend that it be changed to, "If the dog is vicious and attacks the officer or others."
Second.
It's been a motion by Councilman Lewis, seconded by Councilman Sutler to amend the proposed ordinance to include the language referencing a vicious animal acting in a vicious capacity for the public or for the officer. The exact language will be profitable. Any discussion on the matter? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll now accept the motion, accept the council committee of the whole report for November 5.
So moved.
Second.
By Councilman Lewis, seconded by Councilman Sutler. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now I have before us item number seven. Do you have requests for utility connection assistance for 420? Mr. Koenig, please brief this item.
Thank you. Council President Slaven, in the packet is a memo regarding utility connection assistance related to 420 West Reed Street. This proposal is developing out of improvements in the downtown development district. During the city council meeting of September 26, 2016, there was substantial discussion regarding requests for utility connection assistance for various projects within the downtown development district. After detailed debate, the city council voted five to four to support the request of Mr. Brandon Pelton in the amount of $30,000 for a proposed extension of water service fire line to the building located at 131 West Lockerman Street. City council then voted eight to one to defer request for 420 Reed Street back to staff and report back to council within 60 days. That's the purpose of this report. The utility connection assistance for 420 Reed Street included electrical system upgrades of $7,100, water sewer system upgrades of $59,915. This is a project that will construct six duplex residential units on Reed Street located at 420 West Reed Street and is being developed by Mr. Mike Maupin, the managing director of Maltese Investment Group. City manager's recommendation with respect to these types of requests in the downtown development district is as follows. City of Dover should budget a total of $150,000 per budget year, broken down to $50,000 for each utility, water, sewer, and electric for utility connection assistance. These funds would be reserved on a first-come, first-served basis and funding would be capped at a maximum of $25,000 per utility per project. The above referenced allocation of $30,000 from the water fund would be honored, but future requests cannot exceed $25,000. For FY17, the $150,000 cap would become part of the first budget amendment to be considered by city council in the coming weeks. Water, sewer, and electric funds have prior year... Water, sewer, and electric funds have prior year favorability from FY16, which can be used to fund this incentive for FY17. Future funding will become part of the baseline budget request for FY18 in the amount of City Manager's FY17 recommendation for these incentives related to utility connection assistance is adopted by City Council. Then the Maltese Investment Group would qualify for $7,100 of reimbursement for electric connection expenses, up to $20,000 in water connection assistance, and up to $25,000 in sewer connection assistance. Those numbers are derived from the totals above. As I indicated, the recommended motion from my office is to authorize the City Manager to budget $150,000 in the first budget amendment to the FY17 budget and implement a utility connection assistance incentive in the Downtown Development District. With the exception of the previously approved incentive in the amount of $30,000 for 131 West Lockerman Street, the incentive package will not exceed $25,000 per utility per project, and incentives are committed on a first-come, first-served basis. Reason that this recommendation out of my office is written as it is is because there has been substantial discussion about the cost of extending utilities in the downtown area and how it has been a detriment to a number of projects or delayed projects because of concerns associated with the connection cost. This is not extension of free service. This is extension of infrastructure to serve existing and/or future customers. All of these extensions actually add value to the property, which indirectly at some point increases the taxable value of the property and increases the city's revenue projection from these properties at some point in the future. If you recall during the discussions about the downtown incentives, the city has, in almost every instance at this point, foregone all new revenues associated with these projects. We've granted exemptions for building permits, for other permits. There is a tax incentive, there is reimbursement from the state, there's reimbursement from the county, all to entice additional development downtown, and it still has not been enough to spur kind of the increasing tide of expansion that we expected to see in the district. We are making progress, but it is not at the rate that I think we anticipated going back to the original creation of the districts. This is a substantial amount of money that would be used on the city side, basically, of the properties. I think some of these things may actually extend onto private property where the infrastructure would be extended to, but the basic intent is to improve the right-of-way and the public infrastructure associated with service to these development projects. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Coney. It's the pleasure of council.
Move to accept staff recommendation.
Second. By Councilman Sutler, seconded by Councilman Hutchinson, accept staff recommendation. Any discussion on the motion? Adam Burke, please hold the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Cole. Yes.
Mr. Housefield.
No.
Mr. Hare.
No.
Mr. Hutchinson.
Yes.
Yes. Passes 6-2. Now have before us Agenda Item Number Nine, zoning requests for property located on the west side of McKee Road. First reading of proposed ordinance 2016-28. Recommended for referral to the Planning Commission for a public hearing on December 19, 2016. That a public hearing before City Council be set for January 9, 2017 at 7:30 p.m., at which time the final reading and council action will take place. The ordinance is available at the entrance of council chambers, also available on the city's website at www.cityofdover.com under the Government tab, or by contacting the clerk's office at 736-7008, or via email at the email address of cityclerk@dover.de.us. First reading of the rezoning ordinance is for introduction and referral of the amendment only. It should not be relied upon as approval of the zoning classification. This is for property located on the west side of McKee Road, north of College Road, between 1216 and 1282 McKee Road, owned by George J. Kayes and John J. Kayes. The equitable owner is Medcor Partners, heir of Michael Graham. Property is currently zoned C-PO, Commercial and Professional Office, subject to the COZ-1 Quarter Overlay Zone, and the proposed zoning is IO, Institutional Office, and subject to the COZ-1 Quarter Overlay Zone. It is the pleasure of council. We'll need a motion to refer as recommended.
So moved. Second.
By Councilman Hare and seconded by Councilman Neal. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I will now defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the proposed ordinance in accordance with Section 1-9 of the Dover Code. Mrs. McCall.
Proposed ordinance number 2016-28, amending the zoning map of the City of Dover by changing the zoning designation of the property located on the west side of McKee Road. This constitutes the first reading. The final reading is scheduled to take place on January 9, 2016.
First, item number 10. First reading is offered on the following proposed ordinance. Excuse me one second. First reading is offered on the following proposed ordinance. Amendments to Appendix B zoning require public hearing, and the ordinances are recommended for referral to the Planning Commission for a public hearing on December 19, 2016. That a public hearing be set for January 9, 27, 7:30 p.m., at which time the final reading and council action will take place. The ordinances are available at the entrance of the council chambers, on the city's website, and by contacting the city clerk's office at 736-7008, or via email at cityclerk@dover.de.us. Item 10A has already been handled via our motion regarding the ornament of the New Company. We will not need to take action on that. Item 10B, I would ask Mrs. Councilman, any grievance on this item? This is ordinance 2016-25.
Okay. This is an ordinance that would restrict where tractor-trailers could park in commercial zones. It would specifically prohibit them from residential zones in the lower intensity commercial zones. It would prohibit parking of tractor-trailers, and in the more intense commercial zones, it would limit parking of tractor-trailers to areas designated as such, either loading spaces or tractor-trailer parking.
Questions for Mrs. McCall.
I've got a question. Maybe not so much pertaining to this. Do we have any ordinance about residential, how many vehicles can be parked that are residential?
No.
No? Okay.
If there are no further questions or proposed amendments, I'll entertain a motion for its referral as recommended.
So moved. Second.
By Councilman Neal, seconded by Councilman Lewis. Any questions on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I will now defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the proposed ordinance in accordance with Section 1-9 of the Dover Code. Madam.
Proposed ordinance number 2016-25, amending Appendix B zoning, Article 6, off-street parking, driveways, and loading facilities, and Article 12 definitions. This constitutes the first reading. The final reading is scheduled to take place January 9, 2016.
Agenda item number 11. The first reading is offered on the following proposed ordinances. Final action by council will take place during the second reading on December 12, 2016. Ordinances are available at the entrance of council chambers, on the city's website, or by contacting the clerk's office at 736-7008, or via email at cityclerk@dover.de.us. A, Proposed Ordinance 2016-26. The proposed amendment creates a committee of the whole, with the current standing committees becoming its subcommittees. If there are no questions or proposed amendments, I will now defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the ordinance in accordance with Section 1-9 of the Dover Code.
Proposed ordinance number 2016-26, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Standing Council Committee. This constitutes the first reading. The final reading is scheduled to take place December 12, 2016.
Item 11B is Proposed Ordinance 2016-27, as amended, which amends Chapter 18 Animals to align the Dover Code of Ordinances with the recently amended Delaware Code, and also addresses the amendment that was successfully passed a few moments ago at Councilman Lewis's behest. If there are no questions or proposed amendments, I will defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the ordinance in accordance with Section 1-9 of the Dover Code. Mrs. McCall.
Proposed ordinance number 2016-27, amending Chapter 18 Animals, Section 18-4 Running at Large, Section 18-5 Dog Licenses Required, and Section 18-10 Same Seizure and Empowerment. Appendix F fees and fines. This constitutes the first reading. The final reading is scheduled to take place December 12, 2016.
Agenda item number 12 is the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 2016-22 with Staff Amendment Number 1, Essay Number 1. The first reading of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting of November 14, 2016. The ordinance is available at the entrance of council chambers or on the city's website at www.cityofdover.com. First, I will entertain a motion to consider the final reading by title on a separate motion to be necessary for its adoption. It is the pleasure of council.
So moved. Second.
By Councilman Lewis, seconded by Councilman Neal, to allow consideration of the final reading by title. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Proposed ordinance 2016-22 with Staff Amendment Number 1, Essay 1, amending Chapter 54, Health and Sanitation, Article 1, In General, Section 54-4, Smoking Regulations, and Appendix F fees and fines. Mr. Coney, would you please brief us on this item?
Thank you, Council President Slavin. This is the final adjustments to the existing smoking regulations needed to make it unlawful for to smoke on all city-owned property. There are two changes on page three of the ordinance, and we are deleting a component of the ordinance that existed prior to the most recent Amendments to State Code that references places of employment. This deletion is under the advisement of Assistant City Solicitor Mr. Pepper. And then, this also outlines the potential penalties for someone caught smoking on city property, not to exceed $25, and each day such violation would constitute a separate offense. As I said, this is the final amendments necessary to prohibit smoking on all city-owned property, and the adjustments necessary to make those actions by council final.
Thank you, Mr. Coney. Councilman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recently had dialect with Mr. Hudson, our Assistant City Administrator, on this with regard to fees and fines, and I would like for him to address the full counsel on what his recommendation, or would like to hear testimony from him with respect to if the fine should stay at $25, or we should increase it to $50.
Mr. Hudson.
Yeah. Thank you. We're still experiencing some issues over at the library. We're still having people where there's adequate signage that says that you can't smoke in the area, but they just, for whatever reason, care to ignore it. Several weeks ago, I had an opportunity. Councilman Lewis and I were discussing this, and he'd asked me, do I think that $25 would be a deterrent? At that time, I said, yeah, I think it could be. But after continuously seeing more and more cigarette butts over at the library, it may need to be bumped up a little bit to put a scare factor into someone, so 50 bucks. You know, I think that would be reasonable enough to have someone listen. And the library is the only area that we have continuous issues. Everywhere else, we don't have any problems. The employees here, they go out of their way to make sure that when they take their smoke breaks, they're in where they're not on property. But again, we're talking about the public, and we're talking about people who just really don't care. And what scares me the most about all of this is that, how this whole thing got started is that we had two mulch fires over at the library, and these were careless people smoking their cigarette, throwing the butt into the flower bed. So, we came up with the idea a while ago that why don't we just have no smoking, and maybe that would deter it or stop it? And it doesn't seem to be happening. So, again, when I was talking to Councilman Lewis, I felt that, you know, yeah, 50 bucks might get someone's attention. That was it.
Councilman Lewis, just hold the floor.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neil. Councilman Neal.
Do we have any idea how many people actually have been fined and how much money has been collected?
Mr. Coney.
Anyone who can answer the question.
I don't think anybody has been fined at this point because the ordinance has not been finally adopted to outlaw it on public or city-owned property. So, I think the answer is nobody has been fined to this point.
Councilman Hare.
The sign at the library, doesn't it say, "No smoking within 25 feet"? Does it say, I can't recall, does it say, "Within 25 feet of city property"?
I think it says, "25 feet of the property." Those signs that you're looking at right now are the older signs. Those aren't the new signs. The new signs say, "No smoking on city-owned property," and then it has...
The code.
The code underneath it.
Okay. There might need to, because I see a lot of people at the library, in the back part of the library, on the sidewalk smoking. And if that's city-owned, then they need, is the parking lot city-owned?
Yes.
So, I mean, I don't know how we can, like I say, there, a day I saw a guy smoking on the sidewalk and then flipped a cigarette. You still see the cigarette butts.
Yeah, it's a problem.
So, I don't know how you, maybe you need something, parking lot signs, and this is city-owned, parking lot, it's the City of Dover parking lot.
Well, with the new signs posted, and if any of you have the opportunity, if you want to come by my office, I have three very large maps, GPS coordinates of where all the signs throughout the entire city will be, and it's going to be really difficult for anyone to say that they had no idea that we couldn't smoke on city-owned property. I mean, it's going to be hard. And certainly, having the new signage will allow the police department to be able to, on the spot, give someone, just like a ticket, a quick fine.
Mr. Chief Burnett, are cadets able to issue tickets?
Yes, I believe they'd be able to.
Okay, so that, so they'll be there to see.
With the current signage that we have right now, no.
Well, when the new signs go up, then they'll know.
Yes.
Councilman Hutchinson.
Who's in charge of enforcing this? He just, Police Chief just said cadets. Who else?
The police. The police department.
Police Department?
Yeah.
They're going to be charged with responsibility running around giving tickets for people You know, we just had a tough time trying to make a decision whether or not to hire enough people to take care of the customer service. Now, we got police officers, and I look at the responsibility they have, and now they're going to be charged with running out and enforcing smoking?
Councilman Sutler.
I look at them enforcing the smoking just as if they're enforcing drinking out in public with an open container. If they see it, they cite it. I don't think necessarily that they're going to go looking and see who is smoking a cigarette 25 feet. I think that if they see it, just like they see someone who's drinking an open container or beverage, then they'll probably cite them. But I don't think that top priority would be, let's see who's smoking a cigarette 25 feet away, and let's cite them, but...
That person's smoking and turns into disorderly conduct, then we'll see what happens.
Councilman Lewis. Councilman Lewis?
Well, I think it's a good thing that the cadets will be able to issue summonses because the bulk of the problem, from what I'm hearing, is over at the library. So I'm glad to hear that. And second, I would like to propose a motion that we increase the fine from twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars because, I mean, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but I don't think a traffic, not a traffic, a parking ticket is probably more than twenty-five dollars.
Actually, depends somewhat on the parking. For handicapped, it's a hundred dollars, but fire lanes fifty, but no regular parking tickets are twenty, twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
So Councilman Lewis has moved to adopt
Second.
The ordinance with staff amendment number one as both an amendment, change the fee structure from twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars, seconded by Councilman Sutler. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. On the amendment? On the amendment, I'm sorry. This is just on Councilman Lewis's amendment.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hossfeld?
No.
Mr. Hare? Mr. Hutchinson?
No.
Yes, motion has since five to three. We'll now need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. By Councilman Sutler, seconded by Councilman Neal, or Lewis. My apologies again. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Adopt the overall ordinance.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hossfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Then to item number thirteen, city manager's announcements.
I have none for tonight.
Agenda item number fourteen, council members' announcements. Councilman Sutler?
On December fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, in City Hall Chambers, I, Roy Sutter Jr., for District Councilman, will partner with Lieutenant Governor Bethany Hall to conduct a forum on how to identify characteristics in one, in loved ones' personality in regards to heroin addiction. Lieutenant Governor will review state resources available to help individuals dealing with heroin addiction and mental health challenges. This will be on Wednesday, the fourteenth of December, from six thirty to eight thirty P.M.
Councilman Hossfeld?
Just like to congratulate Chief Carey and the rest of your staff. If you could pass that along, we appreciate your service and commitment for another year to the city of Dover and Dover Fire Department. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Jackson?
Other announcements for members of council? Eric Dunn, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Councilman Sutler. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.[1678.41]